Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? I can hear you here.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, City Hall?
Yes, would you?
Uh, yeah. I can have John out here too. Everyone, we will start in about three minutes. Um, and uh, thank everybody for coming out. And uh, we'll get started. Uh, one thing I'm gonna ask you to do when you come up and speak, would you please uh, ask the buildings to allow people who are downstairs trying to come in to speak? Well, be courteous if you can, if you don't mind doing that. So, someone else can take their seat so they'll be able to address this body. Realizing COVID uh, situation has us socially distanced. We mean that we can't pack. That's all it did one time at Sardine. Therefore, you know, we would like for you to be courteous enough to yield your seat after you speak to someone else who's outside. Uh, everyone, everyone will get a chance, opportunity to speak. Uh, just want to make sure that uh, that you uh, have a chance to speak and also that you will be courteous to someone else who has a phone. Who are downstairs trying to get anything. This town hall will be uh, uh, video uh, video Zoom. Uh, and uh, those individuals who are online Zoom also get opportunities to speak. Or they're being too loud that you really probably want to hear what other folks have to say. But if you don't mind, you speak as I said before, or you allow others to uh, come in and speak to. See, the commission wants to make sure that uh, everyone gets an opportunity to address their commission. Um, that is one of the greatest things in the world to do to be able to address your building body. Uh, and we'd like to hear from those things. It is now six o'clock, uh, and we will start our meeting at the town hall. I open up our town hall uh, for uh, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Um, as I mentioned, individuals wishing to address this commission tonight regarding monument located in Hales Square tonight will be allotted five minutes per speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow the individual to present your group's position in the time that's allowed. Individuals attending video Zoom to sign in Zoom under their name and make a request to comment via chat by stating how they would like to make a comment. Along with by the name and address, individuals will then be given access to address commission. Individuals that have already addressed the commission at the September sixteen, twenty-twenty meeting, which was last week, will be called to speak again if time permits. Please be courteous enough, courteous enough to leave the building after speaking to allow others outside to come in to address this commission. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Also, be reminded that a decision regarding the monument will not be made at tonight's town hall meeting. So, as we prepare to get started, uh, I believe we should be on just uh, Zoom and via Facebook here before we are going with that route as well. Alright, we will get started. Uh, and as I said, you are addressing this by addressing us. You're not addressing the audience. Audience, please hold your bar, your applause. Uh, everyone's speaking and it's not a presentation to, or by presentation to the commission. Okay. Madam Kirk, will you please call the first individual?
Ken Leffert.
Good evening, my name is Ken Leffert and I'm a local resident of Glen County. Uh, lived in the city of Brunswick, grew up here. Grew up, I probably lived in Glen County Public School System. Uh, retired from eighteen day after forty-three years. Had several simple activity roles in the community of them. Terms leader, been a baseball coach. Just a citizen of Glen County for the last two to five years. I've seen different things in this county, uh, different occurrences. I come from a third generation of Portuguese transition in this county, eighteen nineteen. Well, uh, I've seen all kinds of people over this city. At one time, there were a large Portuguese community here. There was a large Jewish community here. There were black people here that were descended as slaves. There were people that wound up here after World War Two. They came out from places like London City, Jessup, various areas. I've heard various discussions over the here over the last, over the weeks in the news. I think we can all appreciate as well that slavery was kind of bored, sick and dehumanizing in this city. Uh, Thomas Jefferson actually tried to abolish slavery when he wrote the Constitution of the United States. Uh, took a hundred years later, everybody decided, hey, maybe we need to do this. Not one of our best in the years. Um, I remember the days of the Voting Rights Act. I remember the days of Jim Crow laws. I saw those things occur in this community. I saw the separate lunch counters at WT Brands. I saw the separate restrooms in Crescent. I saw all of this stuff going right here in this county, in this city. And over the years, it has been a real blessing and a real testament to people of this city that whatever came up, whatever came its way, the leadership of this community had the fortitude to make the right decision for everybody. Make the best decision they could for everybody. This was a work of man's. I'll be honest with you, I knew a city policeman that was married to a black woman and he was ostracized by his peers. I knew a lady that was, his wife was since here in town for years. Uh, uh, back in nineteen, early nineteen sixties. I saw a cross burning in a helpless yard when I was in the San Francisco. With a simple reason that it was of racial heritage. Okay, think about it, how far we've come today. I lived through segregation in this town. And in the late, middle to late sixties, uh, we were introduced to the bus and we went to each other's schools. I'm not gonna tell you it was perfect because it was not. There were some rough patches, but they ultimately, because of the leadership and the people in this community went really relevant this way. Uh, I'm not gonna bore you with the state and local laws that protect this statue. I will say that one of the strengths of this community is that they have always been a dignity and respect among people. Whatever culture you happen to be from, they're cultural. Background you came from, whatever differences there were, they're culturally people respect. Uh, tonight, as I saw outside, getting bigger terms. Uh, we never had the level of citizen involved, social activism. And obviously, exterior oppression is placed on you or city commissioners, on the people of this county, on the people of this city. Uh, here in this county, we've got a long history of commemoration and honoring our dead. No matter whether they are Stuttered Dead, they're Union Dead, they were still soldiers that fought for the cause. I say, leave these statues, commemorate the people that have been there in the last sixty years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your, for your comments. Glad to hear people come here, please, uh, inform me the address too as well, so I apologize. Um, Madam Chair?
Jane Page.
Jane.
Jane Page. Greetings. My name is Jane Page, I was six hundredth Avenue in St. Simons. I'm the pastor of the Democratic Universalist College from Georgia located at seventeen ten Bostrom Street in London. In addition to speaking to you as a representative of that faith community, I come to you, I come to you as someone who's been on a long journey of activism. You see, I was born in southeast Georgia in nineteen fifty to be very conservative, white, middle-class parents. My parents did not have to teach me to be a racist. Everything in my society taught me racism, including the separate breaking factories, the cooled refrigerated water for whites only, and the Jim Crow laws which were prevalent in all our communities. I took the segregated schools to my class as a total integration, uh, when I was in the tenth grade. It was during this time that I met an African-American friend and began to read the more wider. That was the very beginning of lifelong struggle to shift from being a racist, and I fully admit that's the way I was raised in southeast Georgia. I don't think any white people were raised differently in this setting with whatever was going on, from being a racist to being a white ally committed to ending systemic racism and white supremacy. Part of my upbringing included being taught to read, quote, "The Lost Cause" and honor the Confederacy and the memorials put in place in the early nineteen hundreds. I'm embarrassed now by some of my memories which continue to haunt me. However, these memories also inspire my work for social justice. One thing I discovered in my long journey is the pain associated with symbols like the Confederate Memorial here in West Georgia. While some folks see it as just honoring our history and heritage and folks that died, for African-Americans, it's a simple reminder that folks in these parts fought hard for the continuance of a lifestyle which included dependence on slavery and the hugely detrimental aftereffects which are still upon us. This, am I having it set?
No.
No, okay. This summer, we continue to witness the killing of black folks for no good reason, even here in Glen County. And because of the activities in Glen County, it's especially important for us to rise up in the manner of change in what we represent and where we intend to move into our future. And I know folks, let's say, we've come a long way, we no longer see a cross burning in a yard, but we see somebody gunning down in a tree. I don't know if you've come a long way. Even, even if there are those who feel some special kinship to these Confederate statues, raised at a time of backlash, reach history, it was backlash against Reconstruction, that surely doesn't outweigh the pain of many others. Many of our citizens are reminded each time that they see these statues that black lives must not matter to the folks of this community. Let us take action now and show to the nation that we are more progressive than the news networks portray us. Let us move forward tomorrow to tomorrow of a community that represents us all. The statue can be moved to maybe a cemetery for the dead, or perhaps a museum. And the central parts of our streets can be one that we can share together and cry. My Democratic Universalist faith calls we to affirm the inherent worth and dignity of all people. Therefore, I call upon you to make the right decision to remove this statue. You do not need to take a community vote. You have been elected to represent this community. You have the authority to do the right thing and take this statue there. I wish you peace, love, and courage.
Amen.
Neil?
Grant Brock.
Please state the name of the address, sir, coming out, if you want.
Yes, uh, my name is uh, Grant Brock, uh, six hundredth Avenue, St. Simons. And yes, I know Jane Page. Uh, I would like to uh, point out that Thomas Jefferson was a lifelong slave owner and when he died, broke the slave families that he owned were ripped apart uh, to help pay his debts. Uh, he only became president in eighteen hundred because of the three-fifths clause, which is right in our constitution, where some people were counted as only three-fifths. Uh, last week, you heard the sons and daughters and hear again today the importance of burial. And they talk about Union soldiers and they talk about Confederate soldiers. But what about slave burial? Oh, wait, we don't even know where they're buried. Where's the funding to find them and bury them properly? Maybe you should consider that. Also, you hear about southern heritage. So few sons and daughters of the Confederacy and their friends know the Confederate national flag. Why don't they just fly that flag instead of the Confederate swastika, the battle flag? Why not fly that for their southern heritage and put that on their pickup trucks? That's what you would do if you were bringing the community together, recognizing that some people see that flag as a symbol of lawlessness and hate thanks to the Klan. That's what you would do to bring the community together. You could still celebrate your heritage, just fly the national flag. But so many of uh, the Confederate sons and daughters don't even know about that flag. Why is that? Because they're into history. Uh, they mentioned Lincoln's War, they call the Civil War Lincoln's War, usually with a quote from a point in time, but Lincoln's greatness was that he changed over time. And Lincoln is also the founder of the Republican Party. So, uh, think about that if you're saying that you're a Republican and then you're putting down Lincoln, the founder of your party. Uh, also, uh, moving the statue over to Oak Grove is a compromise. Some people would like to see the statue uh, completely removed and maybe uh, ground up. Uh, so recognizing that moving it over to this, uh, statue is a compromise. And finally, uh, the slap in the face to the black vets by leaving the statue up. They did not benefit from the GI Bill after World War Two. They disproportionately served in Vietnam and to this day, we're fifty years after the Fair Housing Act and black households pay extra point five percent on their mortgage, black vets included. Uh, and fifty years later, so that's where we are right now. Uh, it's not ancient history, we still have massive housing discrimination and black vets suffer from that. So, consider that not moving the statue is a slap in the face to black vets. And we should honor them by moving the statue over to uh, the cemetery. Uh, notice also that in Germany, when they got rid of Nazi symbols, uh, that did not erase the history. They're very aware of their history. So, not having uh, the Confederate swastika, the battle flag, applied on our public square will not erase history. In fact, it'll lift it up. Thank you for your time.
Julie Jordan?
My name is Julie Jordan, one thirty-nine Redmond Street, Avenue, St. Simons Island. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I want to thank you for hosting this town hall so that the voices of all of the community can be heard. I've worked and lived in Glen County for over twenty-one years. I've been a teacher, I've been a school counselor, a coach, and a registrar in our public school system. And I've had many opportunities to hear from students about their issues and their concerns. And when I was at Glen Academy, I had the opportunity to have a brilliant young man who talked about Floyd Hunter Brunswick. And I thought it was very appropriate to be able to share his story. So with his permission, I'd like to share his story now. DJ Dallas attended St. Francis Xavier School beginning in the third grade. His mom worked at Rosewood Elementary and would drop him off on her way to work. After school, he would walk home through Hanover Park. DJ described to me his walking past the monument every day. One day, he stopped to read what it said. He learned it was dedicated to Confederate soldiers that died. He shared that this simply did not sit right with him. And he decided to do a little research. Even as a child, he said he did not understand why there was a monument remembering those who fought for principles that America should not stand for. From that day forward, he decided to change the way he walked, home every day from school so that he did not have to see it. When DJ shared that experience with me, my heart went out to him. How hard it must have been every day to walk past something that reminded him of the cruel and brutal practice of slavery and the people who fought to continue that horrific practice. When I spoke to him this week, he shared more about the monument and how it continued to not sit right with him. And through high school and even college, he continued to research the subject. He talked about being a history book, about pictures popping in his head of ancestors who were brutalized and not given even basic human rights. He talked about people defending the monument because of heritage, or the monument really was about hate. He shared that he worries that his hometown of Brunswick is stuck in its ways. How until now, it never was the right time to say something about removing the monument. He talked about even now, him getting pushback from saying anything at all. I want to say, Commissioner, I hope you guys make the right decision, but I'm gonna stand with my former student, DJ Dallas. The time has come to move or remove the monument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Taylor Ritz. I live at six one one Union Street and grew up in the neighborhood's south of Flosser, also known as Sova. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and for holding this town hall for us. My ancestors have been on this stolen land since the Mayflower arrived. I had ancestors who fought on both sides of the Civil War. And I can be proud of the struggles of my ancestors, as well as disappointed and even more inclined at the actions and inaction that they chose to take during their lives. My white privilege looks like when the worst thing that can happen, that I can think of happening to my ancestors, that they might be disrespected by the approval of a statue. I know there are members of this community who can imagine much worse. Your job is to represent us, the people who elected you, the people who pay city taxes and limit city limits to the best of your ability. It seems the people you represent are divided and I don't envy the position you're in right now and the decision that you are going to have to make. On one hand, you might seemingly insult the memory some of these folks have of their Confederate ancestors. But on the other, you might allow a statue that to many of your constituents symbolizes the enslavement and torture of generations of their ancestors to remain in a place of honor. We have heard many rhetoric arguments that confuse this issue, but I can think that you can see through them. Symbols change over time, their meaning changes. To me, it doesn't matter why this statue was erected. It does not matter who it's fixed or whose ancestors it might represent. What matters, Commissioners, is that members of our community have expressed the pain and harm that this statue causes. When our neighbors say that they are hurting, we do not say, "Show me your pain, prove your meaning to me." We say, "I'm on the way and how can I help?" This statue has become a symbol of oppression and hate. It does not deserve the place of honor it currently holds. Maybe not everyone who wants to keep this statue thinks it's a terror racist. But some rallies this Confederate symbol to justify abhorrent overt and covert acts of racism. Linda Chancy, who was improperly appointed to the monument committee, uses her platform to spread messages of anti-Semitism and white supremacy. She and other committee members expressed the covert racism that this statue promotes during committee meetings. The petition to keep the monument had one side who commented that the commission should stop pandering to useless farm equipment and their handlers. This statue empowers those with messages of hate and oppression. To keep this statue is to listen to a few loud privileged voices and to ignore the voices of many, many who you see here today. To keep this statue is to tell voices in our community to be quiet, to sit down, and that their voices do not matter. You have a job to do, to make decisions that will lead us to a better plan. Symbols of division, hate, and oppression must be removed. This statue must be removed. Moving the Confederate statue from the Hanover Park will not heal our community, but it's a start.
Jill Wright?
Good evening, uh, my name is Jill Wright and I live at thirteen oh nine Mainway Avenue, Brunswick. I believe the statue should be removed. For all legitimate reasons, uh, that the people have presented in the last meeting, this meeting towards be removed, I agree with, so I'm not a creepy in any of those things. And I know I've convinced those people that, that, agree with the statute's standing, that, 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 that I can't change the monument. If you as leaders of, it's fine. Thank you. If you as leaders of the city of Brunswick are still unsure what to do, here is my advice. The statue is in our city and given that it's on public land, the decision should be made by the citizens of Brunswick. Let the city of Brunswick decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Vaughn?
My name is Jason Vaughn, I live at two sixty-nine Wolf Place, Brooklyn, Georgia. I won't be before you know it, I have a group of young men on the mentor tonight. I'm a, I am a coach and mentor and a teacher in our community and I absolutely love our youth. And I want them to see it, they're constantly. I've been living in Brooklyn for over thirty years. I was born and raised here. And I ask myself these questions when thinking about the lost cause statue.
Wait, somebody? Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
And I ask myself these questions.
You ask myself these questions?
Tell Zoom people to please mute them. Go ahead.
And I ask myself these questions when thinking about the lost cause statue. How does the statue make our community feel as a whole? Does it give us hope? Does it bring us together? Does it bring love to the people of the community? Does it unite the people?
Does it give us hope? Does it bring together? Does it bring love? Does it?
Get some. Somebody Zoom with you? Hey, someone on Zoom? You got one more. Someone on Zoom inside Zoom here? I'll call that with Vaughn. You decide whenever you want to, if you have a chance to.
feelings are valued, respected, and will be taken into consideration when making decisions for the city at large. I feel that leaving the statue as is would be a gross disservice to these valuable community members, and this would become yet another instance where the South has refused to acknowledge the pain and suffering that is caused under the guise of patriotism. I hope that you can use this opportunity to take a walk in another shoes and see how the statue is harmful and how a decision made regarding the statue will either help repair or further damage your relationship between the local African-American community and the city at large. basing your decision on the simplified concept of helping versus hurting will hopefully guide you to a decision that is both considerate and well-balanced. This is a decision that the city of Brunswick needs to make, but the repercussions of this decision will echo far away from the city limits. Thank you for giving me your time and attention and for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you.
Statue of Watts?
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Edson, Mayor Harvey, Commissioners. My name is Josiah Watts. My local address is 505 Beasley Lane, but I currently live in Atlanta. I speak to you as a son of Glen County, a son of the city of Brunswick, a Sapporo descendant, and also a cousin of Amman Arbery. I drove here this morning from Atlanta five hours just to have five minutes speaking to all of you. I will go into the historical facts of the statue. You know the facts. I want to compel to your sense of responsibility, truth, love, and reconciliation for this community. I'm requesting your leadership to take the city in the direction that we need to go forward for truth, love, and healing. With this statue, we are dealing with the remnants of hate, dehumanization, and the historical degradation of an entire race of people. We live in a country that was built on this. These are the facts. They are undisputed. I appeal to your conscience and sense of morality to finally come to the resolution that this statue simply doesn't belong in a public space. It just doesn't. You stand presently with the opportunity to begin transformational change for this city, for this community, this moment in this movement. During the time that this statue was put up in 1902, it was at the heights of Jim Crow. We had a decision of question versus Ferguson, for we all know that things weren't equal. And during this time, these statues were coming up, reacting to terrorization, murder, and consistent lynching of American black life. This was taking away an opportunity for Black Americans to simply live as human beings with fair and peaceful existence. This is your moment in this movement. When I was a young boy, my great-grandfather, God rest his soul, would take me out to this park. He was a driver on Seattle and the shoulder. He would pick me up in his old Mustang, and we'd come out here and we'd sit, and we'd look at that statue. I didn't quite understand why he seemed to want to take all that time there, but now I think I do. I remember asking him about the statue and him explaining it to me. He said it was there to remind us of our place, of where we belong. I asked where that was. He said simply not as equals, not treated as human beings to many white people. He said it was a reminder that we were probably there, who did belong to them at one time. So as an optimistic young child I was, I asked him, "Well, why can't they just take it down?" He said, "Well, the power structure won't let us do that." No matter if Black people fought for it. So I would ask, "So it's going to be there forever?" He said, "No." He said, "One day, it's going to come down. It's unlikely that I will ever see it, not in my lifetime. But if it's still there when you grow up, maybe you can help to change that. Maybe you can help to take it down." I asked him, "Well, whether they lost, be the same, not fear, not in a public space." I miss my grandfather, who was a part of wisdom, history, and truth to me at a very young age, to fit to humanity for all of us, to do what is required of all of us. This is your moment in this movement. So why are we here? In 2020, talking about this statue, talking about it because it is a symbol of the misguided mess of American society, when it's subjugated, persecuted, then slighted, killed, raped, and exploited an entire race of people for the sake of greed and love. And it was put there to celebrate that legacy, to celebrate those times. But now, right now, I'm here. This is your moment in this movement. Remind them the cousin of Amman Arbery was brutally murdered in broad daylight on a beautiful Sunday afternoon. It was also in a public space, on a public road. We owe Amman to do what is right. His murder demands it to do what is just. This is your moment in this movement. That statue, that statue was put up to celebrate people who fought to keep a system of the humanity of our ancestors intact to preserve their wealth. Brothers who can still see it this very day, a system that involved them not even being treated as human beings. It's time for it to be moved from a public space because that statue belongs to all citizens of our community, a diverse community of brothers and sisters of every race, creed, and color. This is your moment in this movement. My name is Fred J. Barrow, who will be speaking tonight, who wrote the article, "Amman Arbery Home Cusin' Town Hall," talking about how much Amman belonged more than anyone, that the GTI belongs here. I'm GTI. I'm a descendant of those Africans that died in those fields and those that escaped to fight for the Union for their freedom. We are still surrounded by the remnants of the monument, and maybe we always will be, but it doesn't have to be and have public space where we as a community do not support it. I repeat, this is your moment in this movement. A moment to put it in a proper place, the stripes of our deprivation and inhumanity, the stripes of hatred and dehumanization. That statue will put there hate and subjection of a people, and we can move it with empathy and love and reconciliation. To my connotation of white brothers and sisters, we're not erasing history. We're making it right. We're not erasing this statue of history. We're going to put it in its proper place so we can begin to have conversation about its true history and heal it. So I ask you to use this moment of this movement, to use your love for this city and this community to do what's right. If not now, when? If not us, then who? Thank you so much.
If you don't hold that applause now, I'm actually leaving. Okay, so the next question is for you. Go on, Mayor.
Mayor Barter?
Mayor Barter Jr., and I'm Mayor Barter Jr. and I'm a native of Glen County. I live at 57 Wildlife Preserve Drive in St. Sanz Island. I dearly love this place and all who live here, particularly here enough to come out together during a pandemic to discuss this important issue. Despite our nation's discord, let me first say that I believe our future together in this place is bright. For better or for worse, I'm a son of the South. I have ancestors who fought for the Confederacy. It is undisputed that the following four things, among others, happened to our community during the Civil War, and we should never forget them. First, the citizens of Brunswick sent over 1,000 young men to fight for the Confederacy, and only 85 came back alive. Second, Brunswick citizens set fire to our flagship Oglethorpe Hotel to prevent its use as a hospital that might save the lives of wounded American soldiers. Third, Brunswick citizens burned our prized fort and abandoned the town because they couldn't stand to see the American flag flying over. Fourth, before fleeing, these same Brunswick citizens destroyed our newly-built railway system that would have secured the economic future of this place into the next century and beyond, a decision that set our town back for countless years. We should never forget that these things happened or abandoned our shared history and culture. And it is for that very reason that we must remove the Confederate monument from Hanover Square without further delay. This statue does not honor our history. It dishonors it by glorifying the worst decisions our ancestors made, sacrificing the lives of young men and burning their own town in service of immoral cause. Many say, and I myself was taught, that the Civil War was not about slavery but about states' rights. Well, what was the primary right at issue? The right to own the bodies of other human beings and force them into submission. It is also undisputed that these four things happened here during our shared history. One, in 1803, captive Africans committed mass suicide at Epo Lani on St. Sanz Island, right where I grew up, because, and I paraphrase one of our nation's founding fathers, Patrick Henry, "They would rather suffer death than live their life." Two, in 1859, over 400 men, women, and children of our community were ripped from their families and auctioned off to pay the gambling debts of absentee slave owner Pierce Butler in the largest single sale of human beings in our nation. Those of us who know our local history, we call that a weeping time. Third, in 1891, hundreds of masked men kidnapped two Black men accused of robbery and murder. The men were hung from Alado's here and escorted to walk right back over there. Their bodies were riddled with bullets. And just one example of over 4,000 documented racial terror lynchings in the South between the Civil War and World War II. Against, where mob violence against Black people went unpunished by the police and the local authorities. Four, in early 2020, three men chased an unarmed young man from one of our neighborhoods and shot him to death in broad daylight. Responding police let the killers go free. Our local prosecutor kicked the case to a nearby DA who argued that the killing was justified, and it blames the victim. It is undisputed that these things and many others, bad, good, happen here during our shared history. This statue does not preserve or remind us of any of them. It just stares down like some false god with hollow eyes, misleading some of us into believing that the most violent days of our past were our most heroic. But our most heroic days are before us. If we care about our history, then we must own every part of it. Part of our history was the misguided decision to wreck the statue back in 1902 with this false inscription that the Confederacy was a righteous cause. Let us mark a new chapter of our history today, that in the fall of 2020, we recognize and honor our history and the truth by bringing this false idol down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Barter?
Take me out to this park. He was a driver on Seattle and the shoulder. You will pick me up in this old Mustang and you come out here and you sit. And you will look at that statue. I didn't quite understand why he seemed to want to take all that time there, but now I think I do. I remember asking him about the statue and him explaining it to me. He said it was there to remind us of our place, of where we belong. I asked where that was. He said simply not as equals, not treated as human beings to many white people. He said it was a reminder that we were probably there, who did belong to them at one time. So like an optimistic young child I was, I asked him, well, why can't they just take it down? He said, well, the power structure won't let us do that. No matter if black people fought for it. So I would ask, so it's going to be there forever? He said, no. He said, one day it's going to come down. It's unlikely that I will ever see it, not in my lifetime. But if it's still there when you grow up, maybe you can help to change that. Maybe you can help to take it down. I asked him, well, what if it was to be the same, not here, not in a public space? I miss my grandfather, who was a part of wisdom, history and truth to me at a very young age, to picture humanity for all of us, to do what is required of all of us. This is your moment in this movement. So why are we here? In 2020, talking about this statue, talking about it because it is a symbol of the misguided mess of American society when it's subjugated, persecuted, then slaved, killed, raped and exploited and entirely some people for the sake of greed and love. And it was put there to celebrate that legacy, to celebrate those times. But now, right now, I'm here. This is your moment in this movement. Remind him that cousin of mine, who was brutally murdered in broad daylight on a beautiful Sunday afternoon, it was also in a public space on a public road. We owe Ahmad to do what is right. His murder demands it to do what is just. This is your moment in this movement. That statue, that statue was put up to celebrate people who fought to keep a system of the humanity of our ancestors' attack to preserve their wealth. Brothers who can still see it this very day, a system that evolved from not even being treated as human beings. It's time for it to be moved from a public space because that statue belongs to all citizens of our community, a diverse community of brothers and sisters of every race, creed and color. This is your moment in this movement. My dear friend Jim Barker, who will be speaking tonight, wrote the article, "Amaaah, I belong to the accountable," talking about how much Ahmad belonged more than anyone, that the GTI belongs here. I'm GTI, I'm a descendant of those Africans that died in those fields and those that escaped to fight for the Union for their freedom. We are still surrounded by the remnants of the bond and maybe we always will be, but it doesn't have to be and have public space where we as a community do not support it. I repeat, this is your moment in this movement. A moment to put it in a proper place, the stripes of our deprivation and inhumanity, the stripes of hatred and dehumanization. That statue will put there hate and subjection of a people and we can move it with empathy and love and reconciliation. To my conversation of white brothers and sisters, we're not erasing history. We're making it right. We're not erasing this statue of history. We're going to put it in its proper place so we can begin to have conversation about its true history and heal it. So I ask you to use this moment of this movement, to use your love for this city and this community to do what's right. If not now, when? If not us, then who? Thank you so much.
Don't hold out applause now on my actual lead. Okay, so the next question is, go on, man.
Mayor, Attorney, Council, friends and neighbors. Thank you for listening to my thoughts about our shared past and our communities for a future. My name is Jim Barker Jr. and I'm native of Glen County. I live at 57 Wildlife Preserve Drive in St. Silens Island. I dearly love this place and all who live here, particularly here enough to come out together during a pandemic to discuss this important issue. Despite our nation's discord, let me first say that I believe our future together in this place is bright. For better or for worse, I'm a son of the South. I have ancestors who fought for the Confederacy. It is undisputed that the following four things, among others, happened to our community during the Civil War and we should never forget them. First, the citizens of Brunswick sent over 1,000 young men to fight for the Confederacy and only 85 came back alive. Second, Brunswick citizens set fire to our flagship Oglethorpe Hotel to prevent its use as a hospital that might save the lives of wounded American soldiers. Third, Brunswick citizens burned our prized fort and abandoned the town because they couldn't stand to see the American flag flying over. Fourth, before fleeing, these same Brunswick citizens destroyed our newly built railway system that would have secured the economic future of this place into the next century and beyond, a decision that set our town back for countless years. We should never forget that these things happened or abandoned our shared history and culture. And it is for that very reason that we must remove the Confederate monument from Hanover Square without further delay. This statue does not honor our history. It dishonors it by glorifying the worst decisions our ancestors made, sacrificing the lives of young men and burning their own town in service of immoral cause. Many say, and I myself was taught, that the Civil War was not about slavery but about states' rights. Well, what was the primary right at issue? The right to own the bodies of other human beings and force them into submission. It is also undisputed that these four things happened here during our shared history. One, in 1803, captive Africans committed mass suicide at Epo Lani on St. Silens Island, right where I grew up, because, and I paraphrase one of our nation's founding fathers, Patrick Henry, "they would rather suffer death than live there with me." Two, in 1859, over 400 men, women and children of our community were ripped from their families and auctioned off to pay the gambling debts of absentee slave owner Pierce Butler in the largest single sale of human beings in our nation. Those of us who know our local history, we call that a weeping time. Third, in 1891, hundreds of masked men kidnapped two black men accused of robbery and murder. The men were hung from Alado here and escorted to walk right back over there. Their bodies were riddled with bullets. And just one example of over 4,000 documented racial terror legions in the South between the Civil War and World War II. Against, where mob violence against black people went unpunished by the police and the local authorities. Four, in early 2020, three men chased an unarmed young man from one of our neighborhoods and shot him to death in broad daylight. Responding police let the killers go free. Our local prosecutor kicked the case to a nearby DA who argued that the killing was justified and blames the victim. It is undisputed that these things and many others, bad, good, happen here during our shared history. This statue does not preserve or remind us of any of them. It just stares down like some false god with hollow eyes, misleading some of us into believing that the most violent days of our past were our most heroic. But our most heroic days are before us. If we care about our history, then we must own every part of it. Part of our history was the misguided decision to wreck the statue back in 1902 with this false inscription that the Confederacy was a righteous cause. Let us mark a new chapter of our history today that in the fall of 2020, we recognized and honored our history and the truth by bringing this false idol down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Audrey Gibbons? Hi, I am Audrey Gibbons and I was city resident in 2009 East Street. I am speaking on behalf of the Board of Warner-Agnes African Racing Union Institute, which is which is dedicated to fostering racial understanding and harmony. While his scout was born on St. Silens Island, the son of formerly his slave parents, he left here, became a lawyer and eventually founded one of the nation's first and most successful African-American newspaper, the Chicago Defender, the paper established around the same time the statue was erected. Like many African-Americans of that time, Ava fought the war for other sons, a place where he could live freely as an equal human being. But that would have been impossible in Glen County of 1902. When the Civil War ended, formerly white people in Glen County struggled to build a new life with no money, resources or education. Reconstruction, which was trained to help people, enslaved people, created a movement that was quickly abandoned, leaving thousands of Glen County citizens impoverished, illiterate and without resources. Not long after, jail parole laws took away the inner bank of hope of living as adults and so many and drinking. And for a deal, a great deal of 20th century and southern apartheid existed that many citizens living today easily remember because we grew up in it. Despite all of that, we are told by many that the legacy of oppression of black Americans is in the past and should be forgotten. In relevant today's society areas, we are told that the hundred years slavery, the jail parole laws, the voter suppression, the red line we prevented home ownership and countless injustice have worsened the conditions of black Americans in 2020. That's history. Forget all the violence. Yet many of the very same people say we should remember and honor history of a white man who fought under the banner of a true government against the United States of America while killing hundreds of thousands of American soldiers over 150 years ago, holding both positions of ideological or humanity. This statue, similarly, is a foot on the name of African-American people who oppose over 60% of this city. And we say enough. Our community resolved to come together, to heal, to respect each other as equal human beings. But to do that, we must accept the truth of what happened and the others that the statue represents, not just to the white citizens of Glen County, but for all of its white citizens. The statue in question should be removed to leave cemeteries and not just because it's a painful cemetery in a public square, it should represent all citizens. This statue should be removed because it is etched with lies and propaganda as it that honors the brave men and women who fought waywardly for the United States of America, the stars and stripes, not the scars and balls of the Confederate States of America. Indeed, the Southern region and the Southern Glen County continue to honor this bravery of all American soldiers with statues that represent a distorted and false narrative about what happened. We are doomed as a society and we are doomed in future generations here to be to war of future. And we are doomed in future generations here to war of the same. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Brown?
Mayor Commissioners, good to hear that. Brad Brown, the supporter of Princeton Carper Street and a much liked home resident in this community in the pleasure of serving in your capacity for the public test and understand the pressure, the demands, the angst that comes with being in that position. And I think one of the things that we seem to be missing out here is as elected official, there's an oath in state, an oath to uphold the constitutional status of the state of Oregon and uphold the laws of the state of Oregon. Sometimes it involves not laws being agreed, sometimes we have personal disagreements with the laws. I know about myself, when making decisions about legal licenses, something that I was actively opposed to, but I had to follow the law in these little things. And I think I encourage y'all, prepare for the people, which we should, and we're listening to what they're saying, but we need to follow the law whilst the law's stating what we can't do and we can't do. And I think it's very clear and they're aware of where they stand on that. As a member of the committee that y'all put together, I appreciate your commitment to serve there and I think we as a committee came to a resolution, really good, of what we can do within the law and that being putting sightings around and contextualizing the story behind that. And one of the things I pushed early on is, and I keep hearing it from the community, we need to recognize and do something to support the African-American people in what they did during the American Civil War. A lot of people don't even realize that all St. Silens, the first African-Americans to be trained to be soldiers or stationed in St. Silens Island. That history is not known. That history is not discussed. I may be one of the few that actually brings it out and presents that at the schools and doing presentations. But I think we need to do more in promoting the history and contextualizing, giving that voice to many things that occurred overnight that have just been lost to town, that have been shoved aside, but not hiding it. We don't need to hide where we came from, what occurred in the past. Was the past ugly in times? Yes, it was. Things occurred in the past that today we look at and we sort of shake our head and think, how could that have occurred? Yes, they have. But we need to do things, and we need to do things not under law rule. And I haven't heard nothing that law rules wrong. Law rule did some things in the past that are right. Doesn't make people right today with law rule in our cities. We need to follow the law. We need to do things in any legal matter, in the other program. And I think y'all have a tough city to make on that, to understand, to do that, to carry. I will thank y'all for listening and I may go to discussion time.
Thank you.
City District 104, Gas Street. My name is Brad Brown, I appreciate you coming in. This has been really difficult because there is no doubt about our history. I have a few questions. I'm asking, moving the statue, what are we trying to accomplish? Is it going to stop racism? Is it going to change our history? I went on the internet to see how many cities change when removing statues and checked about one of those dot com. I don't know of any good, bad or different that came out of removing statues. Unfortunately is, that is our history, the good, the bad and the ugly. And there's a lot of ugly, ugly in our history. But it is our history, it's yours at night, it's black, it's white, it's brown, it's green. You're not born a racist. Racism is not a disease. It's taught to us. As one person said, her family was racist, she talked, but she learned not to be racist. That's what we have to strive for. And if you tell me that tearing down that statue, that piece of concrete out there will end racism, then I say tear it down. But we also have to keep the history there so we don't go back and repeat it. I'm not, I'm not denying what happened here or what's happened in our past. But that's who we are. That's how we all became who we are today. And we can't deny that. And moving a statue, if you think moving a statue is going to help, then, you know, so be it. But why don't we find how we stop racism? Because racism is happening today and it shouldn't be in 2020. There will be one race, the human race. And that's what we need to strive for. And I'll just take up any more time.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Jones?
Good evening Commissioners. I am Elizabeth Jones. I live on St. Silens Island. I want to give you some history regarding the American Civil War, also known as the War Between States. I'm a descendant of many great grandfathers who fought in Georgia for the Confederate States of America. If you were born or raised below the Mason Dixon line, you are also most likely a descendant of a soldier who fought during the Civil War. This war was fought on American soil between Americans and upwards of 850,000 northern and southern men died of wounds and diseases. So this was more men than we have lost in all the wars we have ever participated in in American revolution to Afghanistan. Therefore, this Civil War is a huge part of our American history, which was not, which is not, should not be destroyed. The wording on the Hanover Monument does not mention slavery. This monument is a United States war memorial erected by the Ladies Memorial Association of Brunswick 118 years ago as a tribute of love to the, to the heroes of the Confederacy 1881 through 1865. It is only the monument dedicated in the Civil War erected in Glen County and it should not be removed, relocated or destroyed. The Georgia State law states that the monument cannot be removed or relocated. The law is what it is. A public vote cannot change the law. I don't aburr anyone who wants to direct another monument to their fallen heroes, but please just leave this one so we will have a memorial to our, our fallen ancestors to visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Brooks?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Mr. James Brooks. I'm a volunteer project manager for the African-American community. I stand today and oppose removing this statue. My main reason is I oppose removing that statue is to say this city of Brunswick taxpayer thousands of dollars. Georgia has one of the toughest laws in the nation for its removing statues among them. It behooves you all to look at Georgia law, state law 50 dash 3 dash 1, also Senate Bill 7777, it states, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, that public officials cannot remove statues of public property nowhere that's the state of Georgia law. If you all vote to remove that statue, it's going to cause not the citizens and residents of St. Silens, not the citizens and residents of the county, but it's going to cause the citizens of the city of Brunswick to taxpayer thousands of dollars to pay legal fees, legal fees to lawyers to represent what the city will go over if y'all decide to remove that statue. Now, I do serve in the community. And what I suggested was to leave it there and put history about what the Confederate soldiers did. If anyone put the history of the Black Confederate soldiers, we hate people such as Father Martin, the Reverend Nathan Al, the Reverend Z. Chilwell, the Reverend J. B. Seale. Let's surround the history, the great history of African-American history around that statue. We love brothers. That did not come up until the death of Lamar Allrey. Mr. Mayor, one thing I want to remember, we served together when I was City Commissioner, we served together 2010. We had three black children walk the streets, three blocks from that statue. Same thing, it's all, the house was open, they didn't realize that someone was staying there, they were inside there, but when they heard the noise, they ran across the street in a public, a city public park. And that young sweatmill, the barn split, was gunned down and shot twice in the back. But our former chief of police, as you recall, did not make an arrest. I was there, I was on the scene, I was there. Allowed that young man who did the shooting, father come down when we crossed Georgia, who was a police officer, to bring that, his son into the city police station to question. We asked city father, we didn't do a darn thing about it. Don't let the removal of this statue cause us to be like they did in Henry County last week. The city, when they moved that statue in Henry County, now they have a big lawsuit against the Commissioner. Who paid for those lawsuits? We, the citizens of Atlanta.
Thank you.
Beth Fennel?
Good evening. My name is Beth Fennel, at the same time in Thailand. I've lived in Glen County for 15 years, so obviously not my whole life. I'm in awe of the people who have spoken so far this evening. I'll share my thoughts. The high school that I attended, for which I sang a fight song many years after I graduated, changed its name because the original name was of a Confederate general. It didn't represent the community values, the students' values, the families' values. It didn't hurt me or my family or my friends at all for that name to be changed. In fact, I learned the importance of listening and hearing others. It didn't damage our legacy. It improved our perspective on humanity. Recently, our professional football team changed its name. That didn't hurt either. It was the name that disrespected a whole group of people. That didn't hurt me, but I learned. And when we learn, we grow. If we listen and we hear, we grow. When we grow, we change. We need to be able to change. The change for the monument to me isn't change, obviously for change sake. It's change for good. It's change for the better. It isn't awesome to celebrate one group while oppressing another. That's not awesome. What is awesome is our human capacity to learn and grow and change and evolve. The inscription on that monument in Hanover Park, which I walked from earlier this evening, says that they fought, the honored soldiers said that they fought for a cause that was Here is how that just cause was stated by the vice chairman of the Confederacy, Alexander H. Stevens. He stated that the cornerstone for that, for the cause was to strive at the great truth. That great truth was that the neighbor was not equal to the white man, that slavery's subordination to a superior race is his natural and normal condition. This, our new government of the Confederacy, is the history of the world based on this great physical, philosophical and moral truth. That is not a just cause. Whether the monument says anything about slavery or not. Whether the monument says anything about slavery or not, the vice chairman of the Confederacy revealed the cause. It saddens me to know that any man or woman ever held those beliefs. And sadder yet, that some would still honor the justness of the fight to perpetuate slave ownership. It would be truly awesome to show that we have learned and that our truths have evolved. I read arguments on both sides of this issue. For those who would like to keep the monument and pay tribute to the fallen Confederate soldiers, I believe you should be able to mourn their lives, but in another place, a cemetery seems appropriate. As a teacher, former teacher, I try to imagine explaining to a group of young children the inscription on that monument and the history that inspired it. Young children would know the inconsistency of the values we teach in school, equality, justice, treating others with respect, and the values implied on that inscription. The decision seems simple to me. Compassion, decency, empathy, kindness, fairness, and respect should be our compass. Be courageous and just. Any loss some may feel with the removal of the statue will surely be overshadowed by the knowledge that we are a community that makes decisions guided by a respectful, prodigiate equality of each other. Remove the statue. The only thing necessary for the triumph of oppression is for good men and women to do nothing. So do something. Remove the statue. Thank you.
Sandy Colehart.
Sandy Colehart, 825 P. Street, Brunswick. Thank you, Mayor Harvey, and Commissioners for this opportunity to join in with this difficult issue. I'll be keeping up today and will speak to all many opinions. Appreciate the website. Looked at the link and read that information in Georgia. First of all, I will say that I believe that this largely to be a city of Brunswick and local slave descendant issue. Secondly, I've heard a lot of pain expressed and frustration expressed, which can force definitely to anger and rage. And I was hoping we could work on a bit there, but I'm not sure that that's possible. But anyway, I feel that Brunswick has an opportunity to tell a very impactful story of its heritage and its harmony, love for our fellow men despite great injustices and pain. Visitors to our city are interested in our history and are able to learn about early Brunswick through old photographs and narratives explained in our city squares. The monument in the Emmett Square can provide the context to tell the history and the horror of the plantation slavery. This story needs to be told, not moved off-site and not forgotten. Karen Cox's article that I looked at today, just a little bit of research on the internet, on Lost Cause Movement, because I read it and wasn't all that familiar with it. And apparently she states in there three phases. There was bereavement, which started right after the war to 1877, and then there was a celebration of Confederacy, and then finally a quick suffocation. Mary Madden, the president of the Ladies Memorial Association, lost her husband to the war after early 14 months of marriage. In my mind, this monument is a tribute to the dedication and the perseverance of the grieving women of Brunswick. We're out of 1,100 souls, 85 returned. It took the association 15 years to raise the money for that monument, which is why it was erected when it was. The monument as it stands now is a historical relic of another time and place. I think most of us agree to that. The surrounding circle can be made most meaningful with appropriate soundage addressing a true look at plantation slavery in our area before, during, and after the Civil War, as well as the Black struggle for equality in the 20th and 21st century. I can even envision an audio portion with slave descendants telling their stories and sharing their music. We are blessed with such a rich history and heritage, so let's tell it in a way that is thoughtful and beneficial to the community. In addition, I have an idea that might resolve some immediate problems with the monument. It is economical, which I'm sure you will appreciate, that allows freedom of expression and temporarily covers the controversial base. I'm proposing a block hate campaign, similar to what they did in Lakeview, Georgia, which I'm aware of because I'm from Lakeview, and which applied its structure was built to surround and temporarily block the base of the statue from sight. Then employ, possibly employ some local artists to articulate this theme in all areas above the six-foot height to the top of the structure.
One minute, please.
Prove out an area below six foot for public community, narratives, poetry, and art describing how it feels to be Black in America today. And be clear that expression must be family-friendly. The structure could also say that the city is planned into coming exhibit and address slavery in the plantation era and the Black struggle for equality and announcing space to date of completion with an invitation for visitors to return. One final comment. Homogenizing our world is about as far from unity as you can get. True harmony and true unity, true unity in my view is the product of absolute validation of the differences between us. We are all unique individuals from entirely different perspectives, and now have an exceptional opportunity to make a significant positive change that represents citizens of all of Brunswick. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer Waters.
My name is Jennifer Waters, 235 P. Street, Brunswick. On St. Silas Island, we have two sons, one at Glenn Happy and one at Glenn Middle School here in Brunswick. Mayor Harvey and Commissioners, I am a daughter of a very proud American. My father loved our country. He proudly waved the American flag outside his home and would kiss it every morning. We would stop and read every single historical marker we passed and discuss its meaning. He was in awe of our family fathers and mothers and the sacrifices people made so we could have liberty and justice for all. As a veteran, he would always thank other veterans for his service and take off his hat in their honor and get meepy with his words of gratitude. He loved the history of this country. He thought it was important to tell all the history, even the unflattering parts. I am here tonight speaking to you in honor of my father because he loved the United States of America. I am speaking with you tonight because I love the United States of America. United. The Oxford Dictionary defines the word united as an adjective that means joined together politically for a common purpose or by common feelings. As the example of the word united in the Oxford Dictionary, there was this sentence. "The Civil War was a time when our country was not united." I salute all United States monuments. I am grateful for all service people, but the Civil War Confederate monuments represent a time when the Southern states seceded from the United States and fought for their own rights to own slaves, to own people. Slaves did not have liberty and justice. They were treated as property and counted as briefs of a person. I respectfully encourage you to take down the Confederate monument in Hanover Square honoring the Confederate soldiers. I do not want to erase history. Absolutely, history needs to be told over and over. But the Confederate monument in Hanover Square reads that it was erected for the heroes of the Confederacy. I come from a family who speaks for people who are not free. We speak up for them. I was taught to treat everyone equally and everyone plays, no matter the color of their skin or abilities. So in honor of the African-Americans that are not free, not able to speak up, not able to play, I am here to ask you to recognize this monument representing the Confederate soldiers as one that does not honor all Americans. It does not honor a time when there was liberty and justice for all. It does not honor the United States of America. I would like to suggest we have a community conversation to transform this chance for, this moment in time, this time of discussion of this Confederate monument and this time when one of our own was hunted down and killed in our streets due to the color of his skin. This is a time to make big changes and tell the whole story. This is a turning point to make history in our country big changes. Let all voices tell the story. Let's invite local artists and local historians to come together to have this conversation, to tell our story. History has its eyes on us. Mayor Harvey, Commissioners, the whole world is watching. I encourage you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Teresa Brady.
I feel so grateful for all those who spoke before me because, one, they come from this community and that is very helpful to have the history of those who've grown up here. My name is Teresa Brady and my upper address is 711 Union Street. I've lived in Brunswick since November of 2018. And I am the granddaughter of Irish immigrants whose brothers were members of the IRA and in the struggle to overthrow 800 years and counting of oppression of British rule in our island. There is an experience that continues to happen there in Northern Ireland where England continues to maintain its presence, where wars are reenacted throughout the neighborhoods of those who did not win, forcing people to not be able to go to church, forcing people to have to stay indoors. And it's called the marching season. The experience of flaunting in other people's faces the oppressor's victory, if you will, or the honoring of wars that are about oppressing others is counterintuitive to the idea of trying to go forward and trying to be about unity. And I'm so not able to speak as well as everybody else has spoken here, so let me go back to my scripture. Being an Irish Catholic, which is what I am, and that is my identity. My father was inscripted into the Navy during the Second World War. So he was a Navy man and he identified as one. He also was a boxer. My father taught me very clearly that we are to uphold those who are oppressed. We are to encourage the freedom of others and to pay attention to your communities where you're spending money on things that are not uplifting our communities. So in that respect, I am grateful to hear Mr. Brooks's comments about the concern for money that would be pulled from this community to remove the statue. My intention here is to say that I think that the statue should be removed because symbols of war should have no place in civilized society. We should be all working towards abolishing war in every way and not honoring the wars. We should be, in fact, if anything, we should be asking for mercy from wars. My faith has informed me that whatsoever you do to the least among you, you do unto me. The least among us are all those who are subject to oppression and injustice. My faith informs me to pay attention and to not pass by one who has been vandalized or abused. Let's remove the statue. The statue is hurtful to our community, and that includes me, and it's not just for Black people. It holds the memory of those who did not fight to free enslaved people. Last Wednesday, by listening to the events here in the room and the comments made, I was so grateful that Ahmaud Arbery was brought into this conversation because while many people point out that we've only been concerned about the statue since the murder of Ahmaud Arbery, I believe that Ahmaud Arbery is the touchstone for us to recognize that the injustice of racism continues and will continue. So I'll try to quickly just touch on, today is the 23rd of the month, which is the 23rd of February is when Ahmaud was murdered. And so I just want to bring that into the room. I also want to recognize that in Germany, in fact, millions were killed and sanctioned by law. So let's remember that. Laws don't always direct us in the proper way. And then I just, laws evolve with the development and hopefully the betterment of understanding. Germans have removed the Nazi symbols from places of reverence. That statue stands up high. They have atoned for their actions. There was a man who was concerned last week about the removal of the war memorials becoming unruly and never-ending. And where will it end? Where will we take away all the memorials for war? And I believe that that's, in fact, where we should be heading. And then I'll end with St. Paul.
Please.
Yes. If I am with love, I am nothing. If I am without love, excuse me. If I am without love, I am nothing. And diversely, if I am something, then I am with love. So live like you are something, everyone. Go in love and cultivate it.
The time is up, Ms. Brady.
Remember, you come from love and our work and our destination is love. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I am here today because my heart yearns. It has been yearning for some time. And what it yearns for is rather simple. Fairness. That is why I propose the question to all the decision makers. Why do have Black people never been triggered? Why have black people never been treated fairly? Since 1619 and probably way before that, black people have been treated unfairly, inhumane, and unjustly. The country has been going in the wrong direction for years and years because America continues to ignore its moral compass. A moral compass that says, how is it fair to me as a black person to walk through a public park and be forced to embrace a monument that is a symbol of oppression, despotism, and racism? Oh, it's a memorial for the fallen soldiers of the Confederacy, many believe. But this is the same Confederacy that Travers Michael and Greg Michael believed in or my best friend Ahmaud Arbery lost his life to racial violence. This monument represents a mindset, a mindset of superiority, a mindset that says because I'm militated, I'm less than. A mindset that holds people in positions of power like DA Jackie Johnson, George Barney, and certain people in the Glen County Police Department unaccountably when they fail to do their job correctly. In order to change our community, we have to change our mindset. In order to change our mindset, we have to set our minds on change. And that is to change for better. The monument does not represent progress. It does not represent an accurate depiction of history. That is why I stand before you all today in favor of removing the monument from Hanover Square on the basis that this racial, radiating object does not move the city of Brunswick forward, rather it reminds us of how far we have to go. I want to say this: the law allows for what was proposed in the ABG proposal. Following the law does not say it has to stay in place without contextualization or relocation. Thank you.
James T. Ford?
My name is James T. Ford and I am residing in the ocean wave. I stand before you deceiving, anguished, and disappointed in your heart. I am dismayed at the fact that we as citizens are having to persuade a committee, city council, and mayor by a historical marker that represents an entity that embraces values that are not based nor lying on the ideas of this nation brought forth by the founding fathers of this nation. For we should be at a place and time that has overcome the bigotry of yesterday. Yet today we find ourselves entertaining, failing, and pleading on an issue that is based upon hate. Confederacy, the old salad, are only but a few words that has a sharp and piercing tone when heard. Being that I am a person that dwells in the ocean of history, the lifestyle of the Confederacy is post-Grave, related to that of Nazi Germany. However, the Confederacy was worse. Which is why one will never travel to Germany and see Hitler or Memorial under the soldiers that were Nazis, unless it is within a museum or some sort of historical site. Never in an over area and definitely not on city property. Yet here at this Beacon Avenue, we are debating whether a Confederate monument should remain on city property. Well, I will say this: if the city municipality decides to allow this marker to continue to be a standing being in public view, then there should be another marker placed in the same area, a greater grandeur that shows from which the city has come. During the time of the erection of that monument, the mindset of the city municipality at that time was more than likely one dimension. If history serves me correctly, the Union defeated the Confederacy. And though Abraham Lincoln is still in credit for the Emancipation Proclamation, Lincoln himself stated to Horace Grumman in a letter in August of 1862 that if he could save the Union without bringing slaves, he would do so. Therefore, the grounds of the Confederacy was rooted and intertwined using slavery, which required slaves, which were my ancestors. Ever since my ancestors arrived on this continent, we have had to plead, fight, and combat with those in power for them to do what is right. Our government system, from the local level to the national level, has never done anything in our favor just because it was the right thing to do. And here it is today, in the year of 2020. People are pleading, fighting, and combating with our local municipality on an issue that should not be addressed. If this wasn't an issue in which the national government had to be involved, one could see the reason behind all these formalities. If it was an issue in which the state government had to be involved, one could understand. But being that this is a local city issue, one does not understand why all these formalities. If the city council had to formulate another council on this simple issue, then this is evidence of why the lack of trust resonates between the citizens and this local municipality. This monument represents symbols of divisive racism and an old mindset that needs to go into the shadows of the abyss. The time has come for the city to show that the mentality of this municipality has vastly changed from the year of 1902. Correct this wrong, for once you have corrected this wrong, you will have taken a question mark and made it straight, and it will produce a celebratory moment in which you will leave an even greater estimation mark. Past, present, and future, the actions and beliefs of the president is a reflection of her stance of the past and will be a reflection from which you are judged from the future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Karen West?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor O'Shaughnessy. My name is Mr. David West, resident. Obviously someone free portrayal here in Brunswick, also pastor, just a few blocks from here, 1010 Amber Street. I just wanted to say a few things and try to be as briefly as possible. I've heard a lot of people get up and say several things. One, Mr. James Brooks, someone I consider a friend and I honorably respect the things that he says, his faith, and others saying about this Georgia state law. We need to understand that this law was extended just last year. And it got through unawares and without taking into consideration all the people that it affected. But even that law states that the monuments can be moved if it's for preservation and protection. So moving it to that area to preserve it, to keep from destroying it, because some more radical people will say destroy it. And in my heart, my soul, I'm one of those that would say destroy it. But to keep things more civil, moving it may be a good option. I want to say this and ask this to all those who are fighting to keep this monument where it is. And I heard one lady come up and say about adding other things around it and adding more history of blacks during the Civil War. But let's understand the difference. The blacks that were fighting in the Civil War were fighting against those who wanted to keep them enslaved. Now, so we got to understand the difference in the two. The one that's fighting to keep slavery and the other is fighting to destroy it, to get rid of it. And to add something to that monument, to say and speak about the blacks that fought during the Civil War. And I heard one say about beautifying it, but how do you beautify hatred? You cannot unite over hatred. There's no way, there's no way. And I heard the argument of patriotism. So I had to just look it up for myself so I understand and I can get in the same mind space of those who are speaking of patriotism that the monument is a symbol. Patriotism is defined as the quality of being patriotic, devotion to and vigorous support of one's country. It doesn't say support of one's state, it says support of one's country. So the Southern states that are fighting, they remove themselves from the United States to fight against what the nation was fighting for. But they failed in their endeavors. And they rejoined the same nation that they were fighting against. But it says the patriotism is supposed to be for your country, not for your state, not for your region, not for your city. It's supposed to be for the nation. So, and let me finish this up by saying this. In giving the meaning of patriotism, it says this: Patriotism or natural pride is the feeling of love, devotion, and sense of attachment to their homeland and alliance with other citizens who share the same sentiment. There are too many citizens who do not share the same sentiment over this monument for it may very least. If you love this nation so much, acknowledge the injustice felt by other citizens regarding this statue. If you love this nation so much, acknowledge the hatred that this statue represents to other citizens. If you love this nation so much, acknowledge the feeling of oppression that other citizens feel because of this statue and where it is. If you love this nation so much, acknowledge that this statue is not a sign of patriotism, but a monument to hatred. And thank you for your time. Thank you.
Lisa Kent? Lisa Kent?
Nice to meet you.
And mayor, that concludes our list from the people that signed up. I'm going to go to two Zoom attendees. And then we have a list of people that spoke previously. Will you go along with this?
Yes, I will.
Okay. From our Zoom, we have Donna Bassett.
And you?
Major Post, if he would. Okay, while we're waiting on Donna, I'll email Major Post. We have Laura Carena.
Hello, mayor, commissioners. I spoke last week, so I'll keep this short and sweet. Having for our line, we're at 322 South Harper Road Drive. I'll say Simon's Island, Georgia. I just wanted to give you an update on the signatures and comments that have continued to pour in on the online petition to remove the monument. These are just the new ones that have come in since last week's meeting. It now stands at 1,125 signatures. And we're able to verify, because of the platform it's on and changeover, that 31% of those are from residents of Glen County. These are not external forces, like somebody mentioned earlier. These are not outside advocates. This is your community making their voices heard. These are people who can be here in person tonight or maybe are not comfortable speaking in public. But for making their presence known, this is your opportunity to leave a legacy for the children of Glen County. Take the monument now.
Thank you.
Jeff Kilbore?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Jeff Kilbore, 3210 Lakeside Drive, in Rosewood, Georgia. And I got to say, I'm really amazed at the amount of misinformation that I see and hear amongst these folks that speak about this community. I lived here, major school, high school here, reintegrated when I was in high school. This is a peaceful, pleasant community where people live in cooperation, black and white, has been as long as I've lived here. This myth about systemic racism and white supremacy is absurd for us citizens and for the city of Brunswick. It's just real simple to me. There was a tragic situation with Ahmaud Arbery. And it happened in Stella Shores. That's not the city of Brunswick. And it was two minutes. It wasn't this community that committed that crime. The district attorney, if she had done her job, we wouldn't be here today because there wouldn't have been a controversy and there wouldn't have been the awareness of the statue. I got to tell you, in all my time living here, I've been in, I've met with Craig Campbell, with Mark Baker, with, I've been meeting with the mayor, working on behalf of the city. The lizards and smarts and the Glen County government, who tried to undermine the city and take money from this government and have fought for the last 12, 14 years on behalf of the city of Brunswick. Never once have I been called racist until now, apparently. Because I think that the people that come up here don't know the history of the war. They don't understand. Slaves were in the North too. People understand that if you went to Illinois, if you were black, if you were a slave, you had three days to get the hell out. And if you didn't, you were arrested and put in jail. And that was Lincoln's own law. Lincoln was not an emancipator. The Emancipation Proclamation did not free the slaves in the North. The gentleman was up here earlier, had a quote, the mayor, Henry Lincoln, in the letter to Horace Grumman. I compliment him. I'm about the same quote. This is what Lincoln said in his inauguration. "I have no purpose, directly or indirectly, to interfere with the institution of slavery or the state where it exists." He didn't issue the Emancipation Proclamation until January 1st of 1863. Only then because he needed the abolitionist vote in the North to get reelected. It was a political move. It didn't have anything to do with eliminating slavery for this country, or for the South. And so to isolate the South and say slaves only existed here and the bad men only existed here is wrong. It's a lie. And I'm really tired of hearing it because slavery was no better for us. It was a part, I said it last week, there's no excuse for it. I'm not here to excuse it. But it existed in the North. What does the South? James Brooks and I walked through these streets, demonstrated against Jackie Thompson five years ago. If all these people had been out there with us then, Alma Arbery might still be alive. We knew then that she was a cancer on this community. We knew then that she had to go. And the lady, Trish McMichael, might not have been where they were. She wouldn't be the district attorney if only we could have had all these people with us five, six years ago, trying to do the right thing. The loss, there's no loss cost. The war was about freedom. And that statue represents fighting against oppression and the North's treatment of the South. And so I think that freedom, states' rights, smaller government, Jeffersonian principles, and not having a gargantuan, elaborate federal government that tells us all what to do every day. There's nothing you do all day long down the flushes of the toilets unregulated by the federal government. Why anybody thinks that government is the answer beyond my comprehension? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Statue is a symbol of freedom. And to me, the struggle against oppression. It doesn't represent oppression. There is no white supremacy in this country, in this town, this city. And you know it.
And the ambassador?
The Civil War ended on May 19, 1865. Mrs. Madge's passion, who had this monument erected, was not based on racism, bigotry, or white supremacy, but for showing respect for all those who had served in the Civil War and for their families. On April 26, 1902, 37 years after the Civil War ended, Dedication Day was held in Hanover Park. This is a picture of that monument, email. This photo was taken that day with somewhere between 800 to 1,000 people of various races in attendance. This was not a day of division, but a day of solidarity. Granted, there have been horrific events that occur in this community. This monument is not to blame. Removal, not racist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm gonna call from Zoom.
Okay.
I have to take my computer out there so everyone can hear. Donna Bassett? Major Post, could you unmute, please, or thank you? She's speaking, Major Post? Ma'am? Okay, okay, here, I'm gonna call the next person that's listed. Latanya Austin?
May I try to place it to one side, please?
Are you listed?
I'm a one dog, one insert. I sound, uh...
Melinda?
Yeah.
No, ma'am, you can't trade. I have to call the people before. Roxanne George?
My name is Phil Roxanne George. I still look at 1045 on the Black Circle and I said, but it's actually 31523, not 2, I was like, so last week. I'm wanting to first of all thank the mayor and the commission for all of your patience and for allowing us all to speak tonight. I just have to say this one thing now. As a white woman standing here before you, I would not pursue to tell anyone in this room what is offensive, or what is racist, or what is harmful to black people. And the fact that a white man stood up here and declared that he'd be better than anyone else about that offends me and creates me opposition to it. Racism is clearly a lot in some ways that may be more subtle than maybe even Confederate flag that is here. So, some folks said some things last week. And so I looked it up, Confederate soldiers were not declared to be United States veterans by an act of Congress approved in 1958. According to Reuters, a U.S. Department of Veterans affairs spokesperson provided them this statement via email that said, per federal law, for VA purposes, the term veteran does not apply to those who serve in the Confederate armed forces. The spokesperson explained that while federal law authorizes some benefits for former Confederates, such as the marking of marked graves outside VA national cemeteries, this does not confer U.S. veterans status for other VA benefits to those affected. But I would say, just for the sake of argument, let's say that Congress actually did pass a law in 1958 making Confederate soldiers United States veterans. So what was going on in 1958 that would make Congress want to pass a law giving Confederate soldiers widow's pensions and allowing their graves to be marked? There weren't a whole lot of Confederate soldiers around in 1958 to plan for these things. But there was a well-organized civil rights movement in progress that was succeeding in its challenges to unjust laws and policies designed to hold Black Americans down. Which leads me to my main point. At one time, for a long time, Georgia state law held that it was legal to enslave, torture, rape, and mutilate African Americans. And that it was illegal to help enslave people to save their bondage. At one time, Georgia state law kept African Americans from learning to read, or write, or vote. Jim Crow laws enforced segregation upheld by supremacy in all areas of Georgia life. And all reasonable people now agree that these things were wrong. But for a long time, all of these things were law in the state of Georgia. The Georgia law signed by Governor Kemp in 2019 is also wrong. It makes local governments that review statutes like this one guilty of the misdemeanor with possible fines. But it does, as said, allow local governments to take appropriate measures for the preservation, protection, and interpretation of monuments. I don't even know how to say this. The Call County judge recently ordered the removal of a Confederate obolus that the county commissioned their morning gone. Justice Seelinger's order references the more general section of state law that allows local judges to address public nuisances that are manifestly injurious to the public public safety. He wrote, in short, the Confederate obolus is becoming increasingly frequent target of graffiti and vandalism, a figurative lightning rod for friction on the mis citizens, and a potential catastrophe that could happen at any time if individuals attempt to forcibly remove or destroy it. He called them monumental nuisance and threat to public safety, which is what this one is. They all are. Not just because of the possibility of injury should individuals attempt to remove or destroy them because anything that gives even the hint of an idea that white supremacy and racist hate have a place in this community threatens public safety because it empowers the kind of people who murdered Alma Arbery in broad daylight and then handed a video of their crime to the police so certain day that their interactions would be seen as justified. Please, standing against this law, raise this monument. I will personally commit to setting up the most amazing ghost monument you've ever seen and raise the monument for the legal defendants. But please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harvey Treibach?
Hi, mayor, it's Troy Rick, and I live on St. Simon's Island. Last Wednesday during the comments, at least four people mentioned that this Hallow Square monument should be relocated to the Oak Grove Cemetery. I have also heard the mayor and other commissioners make the same statement. So I want to address this. Number one, the Georgia State Code 50-3-1 that was passed into law on the 26th of April, 2019, by Governor Brian Kemp, shows that this monument does not meet the qualifications in the Georgia code for removal or relocation. No one has suggested that the monument needs to be removed for construction, expansion, or alteration of effuses, buildings, roads, streets, highways, or other transportation, construction projects. If the monument yet need these qualifications and were to be removed, it would have to be relocated to a site of similar trauma, honor, visibility, and access within the same county or municipality in which the monument was originally located. A monument shall not be relocated to a museum, cemetery, or mosque unless it was originally placed at such locations. Number two, the Hallow Square monument is in the most perfect venue and has been for 180 years. It is not in front of any government buildings, is not in the middle of downtown Brunswick, is not in a shopping district, and most people don't even know where it's located. Number three, other than the Georgia law, there are other reasons why the monument could not be moved to Oak Grove Cemetery. This cemetery is full, and a monument could not be erected on other graves. And if it were, the ground of voids could not support such a monument. I have talked with the Oak Grove Cemetery president, Robert Henner, and he told me that Oak Grove is not, as most people might think, a Confederate cemetery, but a Victorian-era cemetery that was established on May 7, 1838. Also, if the monument could even be erected near other Confederate graves, it would be on the west side of the cemetery and facing that black public housing. It is directly across the street, which would only alienate the community, cause more anger, and make Oak Grove Cemetery a target for destruction. Number four, my biggest question about many wanting to relocate the monument to Oak Grove Cemetery is that you would only be relocating the monument within Brunswick. Only five blocks away from where it is located now, in Hanover Square. And the monument would still be visible. How does that make any sense when it is already in the perfect location and does not cause a safety hazard and is not in danger of falling or causing any physical harm to anyone or to any personnel or private property? What gives, other than some are actually saying they want the monument gone, which would be a hardship on all persons who have ancestors who are United States military veterans that fought in the Civil War? Please just leave this monument alone and bring your own and build your own monuments. I'm all for building new monuments. Commissioners, I beg you to follow the laws and guidelines of the United States government, the state of Georgia, Sycamore Square's Historic Reservation Board, and the City Charter of Brunswick. The law is the law, and it should not be disadvantaged. It should be followed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grab a, right to, free one? Becky Brooks? Melinda Rockton?
I wasn't sure. Thank you, ma'am, thank you, Commissioner Harris. I wasn't sure if we'd tonight, but I wanted to first address a couple of comments that have been made. The former mayor talked about ruling by law. Well, I found it very offensive. We are by law, we are people. The people who gathered tonight, who gathered at the statue to peacefully protest, to write countless letters and emails and petition, we are the people. And I think we demonstrated by the overwhelming support to remove the monument that the people have spoken. We are not a law. We are the brothers of one camp. So I wanted to address that quite often. I also want to address how that's been a very nice week about veterans. A gentleman who was a vehicle veteran said that taking the statue down would be a dishonor to American veterans. He compared it to taking down next, he said, would be the vehicle law. That is a preposterous claim. Confederate soldiers were not American. The Confederacy declared war on America. Just like Hitler declared war on America. So to say that this statue honors American veterans is an insult to American veterans and the hundreds of thousands of soldiers who died fighting for the United States of America. That is just simply not true. So the idea that removing the statue to an enemy is an insult to American veterans is preposterous. The statue, as I said, the statue is an insult to American veterans, an insult to the majority of the citizens of Lynn County as we demonstrated by overwhelming numbers and to all who are loyal to that flag of the United States of America. So once again, I'm sure you can follow the ring for that statue at Oak Grove Cemetery, where it resides with the film with its fellow Confederate soldiers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kiki Ling Flowers?
Good evening. My name is Kiki Ling Flowers. And I reside at 3035 Charlie Cross, Rosewood, Georgia. I keep a comment on a few comments that have been made and add a few more to it. We've already addressed the notion about veteran soldiers being U.S. veterans, which they're not. One can read the article by Sarah Lynch in USA Today, published June 29, 2020. The other claim, the statue also is a symbol, and I like to use the reference of a cancer. It represents cancer in the sense that when cancer is discovered, the first thing that surgeons usually do is cut it, cut the tumor where the cancer begins. And then the next thing that happens is there is a form of treatment. So the statue represents the tumor. The treatment is usually chemotherapy of some sort therapy to rule out any branches of that cancer. And that's what we have to do. We have to start with the statue, take it out by the tumor, and then shrink the racism that has branched out from it. You can't always see it. That's why the chemo goes through the bloodstream and kill these cancer cells. And we have to kill what that statue represented. And someone said, you wouldn't be having this conversation, you wouldn't have this conversation if it wasn't for the enslavement of so many Africans, such as my great-great-grandmother Penelope. The other thing I want to mention is, we heard many comments about laws protecting these monuments and statues. Yes, laws are in place, but like Congressman John Lewis said, sometimes you have to get in good trouble to change those laws. Our protests against unjust laws, if these laws are protected of cancer in our community, then we must, we must, I will once surgically remove it and then continue to work to kill the racism that's associated with it. And finally, I want to kind of take that thing further with what Shirley Caesar said when she penned the song, "Say that we're gonna tear your kingdom down." But let's replace that with racism. We're gonna tear your kingdom down. You've been building your kingdom all over this land, but with racism, we're gonna tear your kingdom down. And it takes all of us to do it, and we're gonna stand together until this founding done. We're gonna treat this cancer that's branched out in our community and throughout the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Pitt. And that concludes my list. Did I miss anyone that would like to speak?
Someone open here.
Yeah, so if you could come state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Ozzy Rusab. I'm the current resident of St. Samans Island. I grew up on St. Samans for eighteen years. I went to high school right down the street from Mingle County, which was full of gray communities. I had the beach, my friends, school spirit, and really had no worries at all. I was a traditional Ivy student. I moved away five years ago. I got exposed to a much different reality of the world. Due to the events of twenty twenty, I'm currently back in town. It didn't take long for me to realize that there's a big difference between visiting the Golden Isles versus living here. This summer, I joined the residents of Brunswick and Browning together for Aunt Arbery, while I watched locals and tourists alike flock to the area and as ignoring the health and social justice crisis. Truly a no better example of the white oblivion that is so prevalent here. For me, it took time and distance to realize the problem that keeps you in my hometown and my own contribution to the system of racism I wasn't even aware of that I was a part of. It took a lot of self-education and effort to learn since the system made little effort to teach me. This is not unique to me. This is the reality that many of our ancestors go through. The legacy is deep rooted, just like the random trees and storage structures that overlooked in the life. By keeping the veterans after standing, we continue to instill the values that it holds. It's twenty twenty, please get a reality check. Those that deny racism in Boone County have never experienced it because they're most likely white. I'm speaking on behalf of the young people, but the total of voices do not matter. Are we going to continue to teach our young that racist values are acceptable? To all the white residents of Boone County, are we going to continue looking at oblivion or finally make an effort to create change? Use your privilege, take down the statue, or raise the name. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have that to tell us my name?
That's one of them.
Ladies and gentlemen, the voter, your name is, my name is Vinnie Williams, I'm from Derry, I'm also a member of several veteran organizations here in the country. And my comments, again, will be for the voters. That is where my heart is, that's where my love is. And this monument represents the voters. Now, anyone that served in the service will know that a small portion of the leadership in military is justice, and everybody else is illicit people, like I said. In eighteen sixty, the illicit people in the Confederate army were all poor people. They did not own slaves, only the rich owned slaves. The poor people were signed before their families and their homes. So this is accepted that the average person in the military was fighting for slavery is incorrect. So that part I like to get straight off the bat. Those veterans, illicit, that fought in the end, have been recognized four times by the federal government, US Congress, that's filled in the law, signed by the President of the United States, given oath to those veterans, some veteran statues. That makes them brothers to me and my military brothers. So to say that they are not veterans is dishonest. To prove that point, even today, when you find a Confederate grave, it's not hard to be a, the United States Veterans Association will furnish a stone for that voter to be placed on that grave, so they can see and go send a gun, that's a better thing, but now, to law that we refer to many times, fifty-three, dash one, protecting the monuments, it also protects ours. But because of the veteran status, that monument is also protected in the federal law. Now, so I call upon you, instead of, let's do something stupid like move the monument or tear it down, let's back up, let's look at what we can do as a compromise. Let's take it up a monument close by or somewhere else, to another organization like the mayor, who is first by their vote, or to the fifty-fourth Massachusetts Regiment, who fought in the area. That way we'll have a teaching tool for the Confederacy that will show both sides of the question, and the young people in the future will have something tangible they can look at and lay their hands on and understand. Yes, this is wrong, this is right. Some people, this is wrong, and other people, this is right. But it gives us a common ground where we can talk among ourselves. Let's spend that money to preserve history, give us a teaching tool, and not tie a bunch of money that they wind up in waste. Let's save the money for the shooting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the building? Let's see, we didn't have time to speak. I think your name and your address, sir.
I'm David Soars. So listen, I was raised on St. Samans Island, Georgia. I have something written, but in respect for doing your time as right in hand here, I want to just give it to you in the heart. To the man who just spoke, I'd like to say, sir, thank you for your service here in this big country.
Thank you, sir.
And I mean that from bottom of my heart. And the love that's in that heart is why I have to speak these words here now in speaking with you as well. The fact is, the Confederacy did not stand for what we now, as American citizens, stand for. We stand for peace, justice, and hope, for mercy, and love to propel those things. Commissioners, I did not impede you. This is a hard thing to do. One's job, one's calling is often almost impossible choice. I'm still wrestling with mine. It's our respect for you and yours. But for the good of the children who I yet to have, who will more than likely look like me, I must say to my fellow citizens, and you, sir, their lives depend on the love in the hearts of their neighbors. Their lives who are yet to even be here depend on the overcoming and eradication of the doctrine of white supremacy, which will teach my child that he is worth less than anyone with the opposite or lighter skin tone. That is a lie. And if we are to live in the truth and with love and responsibility, I believe we must remove this monument, as hard and annoying as it is, and make that always remind us that hard work of why we do not want to be in this position ever again. Ahmad Arbery was killed before jogging down the street. That's it. He looked suspicious. He looked suspicious because people in that neighborhood, indeed all of us, even me, we have all been conditioned to look at Ahmad Arbery and my own skin as criminal. We have to change the condition. That is an impossible task, however it is our call, unless perhaps we can, with one simple step, of removing this monument, which holds a shadow over the head of children like me, every day, and as hard as it is, I hope and pray that we can heal from this by committing to healing ourselves, by committing to healing our neighbors. That's love. And if we are to love our neighbors, I hope that that's where we can begin. And thank you for your open ears and your broken hearts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We can't get anyone on Zoom, so we'll have to.
Yes, Ahmad Arbery, let him go to lead their comment about check.
Wow. Sorry that caused, may call them not to give the expected presentation that they would like to give. Sometimes being a person can observe a lot versus just writing something, and what comes out is what you present, what you want to present. Also, people who are here, please understand by no means that I am advocating for a statue for the mayor, please don't take that, because I am not advocating for that, I don't want that. I serve, I serve the people, we all serve the people, we all elected to serve the people. It seems that we have come to the end of our Red Time Hall, this meeting. It's been a very fruitful meeting, and a lot of comments have been received, a lot of, I want to thank you all for being so kind and being civil to each other as you make your comments, and it shows the fact that how good this community is. Before I close, Commissioner Harris, want to say a couple of words for.
Just a simple word. I just want to say thank you to everyone that took out their time to come out and participate and express how you feel about your feelings and the situations and circumstances that go on. But I do want to say this to all of those who are saying that this commission should just make the decision. You're right, we are elected officials, and we were elected to represent the people. And we are told that we don't listen to the people. And so now, we're listening to all of the people, but we're still being told, go ahead and make your decision. We have a tough decision, this is a tough matter, and it affects both sides of the line. And it is our jobs to listen to all of the people, and that's what we have tried to do, that's what we have demonstrated, that we are a commission that will listen to the people. When all of this first started, everybody said, listen to us, listen to us, listen to us, listen to us. And that has not changed. We heard you, you asked us to listen to you, and that's what this process is all about. It's about listening, and to me, that's what democracy is about. It's about listening to all of the people, and it's about making an educated decision that is for the greater good. And so we will continue to listen, and we continue to educate ourselves, and we will continue to make decisions for the greater good. Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. God bless you and be safe on your travels home.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Is communication and wire available?
Yes.
Oh, we can't hear. We can't hear.
I am so sorry. Okay, I will speak for them as I speak. I said, we here, we speak for those who could not speak, we speak for those who would not speak, we speak for those who are afraid to speak as well, and that we will listen to all the comments, we put it all together, we will consolidate, not consolidate, put it up, I always said consolidation. And we will convene as we make a decision pretty soon. Again, thank you all for coming out, thank you all for having the fortitude and the strength of your faith to come here and address your commission. It's very well appreciated, you have gotten really involved, and that's what we seek for all officers to do, to get involved. So again, thank you, and we will close this Time Hall meeting. This Time Hall meeting is closed. Have a good evening and be safe.
Thank you. Bye-bye.